From uh.
It's uh we're not silly, we're really good at that.
The attorney?
Like great view.
All right, it's rare there.
But which one?
Who died first?
Oh, okay, see what it is.
I didn't shake the. Sorry, I'm so kiss sick.
Yes, yes. I'm curious about what you got here now. I will present to you the conics, you're just second.
Two houses of Diane Diller who's a white girl. I'm not kidding.
He likes you.
He likes you? He'll like the paper towel dispenser who never.
So we're starting on the gun. So. I can understand. I can understand.
Still my two way.
Are you?
Yeah. Yep, yep.
I have any Rachel's?
No.
I just wanted to fix that, that's up, so.
And if anyone would like another cookie or refill on solid, no, it's probably time. We asked our good mayor to bring us to order. You're gonna say ask our mayor to bring us.
A second to bring us cookies.
The night is young.
Yeah.
We'll see how far with the remote as well.
Okay, so just go ahead and call it order. We'll call this meeting order to joint planning commission and city council meeting. Go ahead, turn over to Rachel.
Sure.
Barry, our government's affairs person.
Thank you. And welcome everyone, and I think it's, I. Not everyone in the room probably knows each other a lot better than you know me, or that I don't you. Yes, my name is Rachel Barry, I'm the government affair specialist for the city. And if we can just go around and do quick introductions, really for my benefit, if you know why. I can go the other way.
No, I want you in.
Russ Hubbard, planning commission.
Patrick, City Council.
Governor Lawrence, planning commission.
Uh Rachel, uh City Council.
You don't know where you're from?
I did say maybe.
If you forget, we'll remind you.
I'm saying.
Audrey Webster, planning commission.
Sheila Semley, planning commission.
Jessica Tolton, City Councilor.
Martin, City Council.
Jennifer Puckett, planning commission.
You don't, City Council.
Yes, and we do have warm regards and regrets from Sarah Carey, who was a TSO work obligation this evening.
Will we get the staff interview?
Also, John Walsh, City Manager.
Jacob Grisham, Planning Department.
Jenny, Planning Department and Project Manager.
Christina Sullivan, Community Development Admin Assistant.
Thank you. So just please do note that this is being recorded. For the millions at home to watch later. We're, just maybe, you know, respectful of space, everyone has found dinner. Please move about during the course of the evening, if you find you need a cookie. Do that, restroom's around the corner. We'll try and be observant of space and just be mindful not to. A bunch of, um, and there will be a break. Of note, no decisions will be made tonight. There will be no deliberations on matters happening. And I will kind of use facilitator privilege if it starts going that way, so, thank you. Uh, we are together in service to our cities. The purpose of this session is really a good understanding of roles and responsibilities on, on all sides between staff, council, and commission. And then, as you know, better than most, uh, we have a lot of new neighbors. We've had a lot of changes in our city, and there are more to come, so we're gonna. Kind of look a little bit at the local landscape, issues on the horizon. And then I wanted to open to the planning commission to talk a little bit about why you've requested the meeting. And related a couple of times, from what I understand, but. Just wanted to get off you all, I mean, being together in a room is valuable every time. Any other thoughts on that? Or what?
I've, I've filled our, our name, planning commission. Represented the city of the future of what's happening and. To be more involved, because I get questions from public. Why did this happen, or what's going on, or that sort of thing. Planning commission, they think I know all. I have to refer them back to newspapers, they're not slayer. And that's just one.
Well, and that's a great way to, to open a roundtable, we're gonna have Jenny just take a couple of notes. I'd really like to hear at least one thing from each of you. Something you would like to see in St. Helens, in our city, five years from now.
What, five?
Felt good.
I took one.
Four down.
Yeah, I know that midterm, right?
I like twenty five.
There's gonna be a lot of accidents, so.
I'm on your side.
Yeah.
Why don't you start, Doug?
What's that?
Why don't you start? Twenty five years, what do you want to see?
Well. I, I really like what's happening with it, with the two factions coming together. And you folks make, the planning commission makes decisions. Based on what's going on, like right now, and what's happening, but you have to have some kind of. Context, a vision as well, what you wanted in, in the outcome, years ahead. I kind of think that the council's role is to be specifically tuned in to vision. And, and quite a ways out front. Uh, twenty to twenty-five years, how do we vision things? And I think case in point is the riverfront development is a project. And how we're going to, what we see. And how we combine things together throughout the entire community and outside the city limits as well. And there's, there's so much to visioning, that I think that, uh, I think that that's kind of the task that we get. Challenged with the most. Visioning twenty-five to fifty years out, trying to figure out what's going to happen. And we, it's, it's a guessing game, because we don't know what kind of transportation will be used. Twenty-five, thirty years from now, it's gonna be different than it is now. And so, a lot of it's a guessing game, but what we have to go by is what we have. And what we're doing, and what planning commission is doing with decisions that they're making about. That they're making for our citizens, like, right now. And I think that there's a big difference between the two kinds of thought processes, I see it that way anyway.
That what you were asking?
I just wrote shared vision, I feel like you're kind of trying to get at that shared vision.
Thank you.
Twenty-five year.
I'm gonna say I agree with Doug, because the five year, I, what I don't wanna see. Is that the Boise property piecemeal, a little bit here, a little bit there. A little more, because I can remember the planning of Riverside, or River Place in Portland. When it was, used to be multiple plywood, and they got one buyer, Salzman, to do the whole project. And so, if we've got one piece going in here, a hotel, and then a restaurant, and then. Small manufacturing, and then we, and then we'll fill in between the lines. We need a twenty-five year vision to keep that from happening.
And up on the boards going master development, or even like coherent?
Coherent, yes. We need coherency.
Um, a high priority for me is safety. I want to see that in twenty-five years that our citizens are safe.
One problem that I see in all of this, we've made it a bad habit. We don't wanna face our problems. We've got some problems with the mill property, that involves the state, we've got physical problems. And nobody wants to talk about them, and they're gonna be expensive to solve. And if we don't solve them, nature part of the property is useless. So that's one of the things, uh, and the city, going even back to the eighteen nineties, has avoided a lot of problems. And a lot of it has been caused by our industry, which we, nobody wanted to say, hey, we got a problem, and now we gotta pay for it. In many cases, the federal government's gonna catch us, it's the new rules taking care of them.
That, do you feel like brownfield redevelopment captures that, or is it more of it?
Well, I, I would like to state that we actually have the ability to do ra- brownfield redevelopment, because we control it. If Boise still owned it, we would, it would just sit there until the EQ finally came through, and they would pay probably a few fines. And still let it sit there, and then pay some money for a cleanup, and the EQ would do nothing with it, like what's happening in. The super fund cleanup in St. John's right now, now we speak, so.
Let, let me go a little further, Rick. Brownfields is a small part of it. The one part that we didn't want to look at, this goes back, there are maps back to two thousand thirteen, there were. Other maps going back to two thousand. The toxic waste along the both the former channel in front of ours. But, yeah, if that isn't taken care of, we cannot access the river at all from it, the federal government's off on that. So the, and a lot of the hope for that piece of property was water access, either bringing stuff in or out. And part of that, if we don't take care of that downstream from here, is our water intake, and some of the new things we're finding. It's oozing out of those sediments, it's gonna kill this area.
So, you know, thinking about the future, would you like to see the city more like proactively seek? Information, like, is it about being more proactive, or is it about?
Yes.
Focus on the river, or is it like?
No, no, it's definitely proactive, but looking back at our past. Hundred years of what we did to the ground, brownfields are a part of it, the stuff that's in the river. One of the things, we used to roll logs into the water here, time in the rafts. And ship them down to Los Angeles and San Francisco after the earthquake. One of the things that we haven't done is kept that harbor dredged. So we have a waterfront, a deep water port all the way to the kayak landing. Now that means we have to beat on the Army Corps of Engineers and other people, some of the stuff, we have to beat on people, because we can't do it.
And could that be captured as like a more active river?
It's, yeah, it's, it's a number of things, uh, that we have to interact with agencies actually beyond the state. And we have to know that that's a problem that's coming in, so we can react to it, we have a tendency not to wanna talk about it.
Because you are, because you are the planning commission with us, that you need to understand that we actually have an agreement with Boise and, uh, on the. Or just, which I wasn't part of the purchase agreement, but I, I'm fully aware of it. That, uh, any of the in-water or upland contaminations that they are one hundred percent on the hook for. Not the city of St. Helens, okay? Just so you know, I don't wanna sound like we're in trouble, we're not. We have, we have some issues, but it's not solely on the city. You can look at that, it will work anytime you'd like.
See, I'm gonna say Rachel, we are in trouble, not because we have to fix it, but we can't use that, because of that.
I just didn't wanna, I just didn't want fear of what's going on here.
Steve, how do you wanna board it up there?
Uh, we have to be cognizant of some of our overall problems.
Okay.
Beyond.
Next. I would like to see some of the. Portions of St. Helens that have not been developed properly. This day and time, caught up to date, sidewalks. Biggest. At kids walking on the old ward. Like, these sites and. Cable sidewalk that you see. None on the far side of the high school. Granite. High school, county. They want the infrastructure.
Or just the street.
And they can't, they can't put a small sidewalk, so they can't get. Yeah. The road.
Well, if we went as a planning commission and a city council to the county commissioners and said. We have, we have, that's.
Yeah, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, do you have?
That's the type of action we've gotta do, problems beyond us.
There's other areas in the city where there's no paving that's been done, there's. I mean, just pitch the city up to date. Let's not let it lag forever here, about twenty, thirty years down the road. What's the months like in the?
Yeah, could that be captured as like modern infrastructure? Like safe, modern infrastructure?
I don't want to make it.
It's not just the sidewalks.
Bring it up to code.
We might be brought up here.
Safe infrastructure, yeah, yeah, there you go.
Put sidewalks in, put drainage in.
Yeah.
Let's get it up to date.
I think the drainage in some parts of this city is really a crucial concern.
Oh, yes.
The older part of the city is a still concern.
Yeah.
And the further we go out, granted, we have the rules and regulations now.
I got called out a period, but you were on something.
But nobody's attacking the old one up. To a level with the rest of the city.
Other items?
I'm spoiled, I'm so chewy.
I'm not chewy.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I come on gender. Well, not surprised by colleagues on the planning commission, but historic preservation.
Yeah.
It needs to be a priority, if we don't, if we don't protect our historical assets of the city, they will be lost. How do we do that? By maybe incentivizing building permits. Giving away, maybe, make sure that we obviously don't compromise health and safety, but others, the counties have done that successfully. It's clearly less expensive to start new than to restore. I mean luckily on the conduct, we got a very enthusiastic guy that's a preservationist. It could have gone the other way. The other thing is, we've only added one property to the landmark, uh, list since the nineteen eighties, so.
Property with.
The Italianate cottage that we added.
That's great, more listed, National Register listed buildings, yeah, I mean, no. It's a lot of tools.
So, mine would be waterfront in five years, personally, why, why not? We are, we are currently in the process of having it all engineered, we are doing a hundred percent, some of the civil side of the engineering, we're doing a hundred percent. Uh, we've taken out loans, we have an urban renewal. Uh, we have everything going in the right direction, and a shared vision that has been. Highly published throughout our community, and we owe it to our citizens to follow through, not twenty-five years. I see twenty-five years after that, uh-huh.
Five years and make a mess. Five year make a mess.
See, so that's why, that's where I think that, that's not true, because we've actually been really trying to work. Hard and diligently on getting the word out there, and, uh, we do have.
I'm not saying.
Who are people who are potential master developers, who are. Talking to us right now. Jenny, check your head over there, and staff to back this up, I'm not just talking off the side of my neck. And, um, I'm not, you just made a comment that kind of upset me, that you brought it up. You just sounded blue, and we'll talk about it openly in this group.
About it.
Openly in this group, 'cause I, I, I really think it should be out in the open, and not a one-on-one, like it has happened before, between you and I. Yeah, yeah.
Could we capture that as like vibrant riverfront, vibrant new development?
Yeah, because, I mean, I'm, I'm gonna be on point six, um, October fourth, and they asked me to pick a couple items, I, I chose waterfront and Halloween Town. So, it would be for Mayor's Monday.
I'd like to make a comment back to restoration and keeping the old way. I come from a couple of towns on the East Coast that were incorporated in sixteen thirty-five. And what we've seen in some of the old times, when the developers come in and we start getting cookie cutters. The sense, the feel, the taste of the town gets killed. Now, take a look at some of the housing around St. Helens, it's weird, but it is St. Helens. When you take a look at some of our developments, that isn't St. Helens. And when we start worrying about the waterfront and other places, let's not. Jump to money that developers do, because it doesn't look, doesn't feel like St. Helens. There, there's a special feel in this town, and it's because of the, the way it was done, but when developers do it, we lose it. And if we lose even the restoration part of it, we're killing a corpse and then ripping it apart.
Yeah, and could this be like preserving the character? In, in the future, you want the, the sense of place and the unique.
Or history.
The preserve.
Heritage tourism is great for this state, so.
Yeah.
And preservation is driven by.
Yes.
So we, we're kind of modeling, and we're kind of modeling ours off of, uh, many independents, or any independents is many, many of us. And if you look at, they're, they're actually gonna be doing a main street there here real soon. Um, it'll be a conference that you could probably even join in publicly, I'm sure, to watch it, it's via Zoom. And, uh. It's a, it's a very unique twist to an older part of town, but it, it fits that waterfront, just if you have the opportunity to go down there and look at it. Go down there, walk into the hotel, order yourself some food, go up to the roof and, and eat on the hotel. Um, it's just, and, and there's, there's new buildings down there, um, that's who. And, and the way they did it is they showed the citizens the return on the investment. By just letting some developers come in and do their thing, the return of their investment is phenomenally good, and they were even conservative in their numbers, and their numbers are way higher than. What they projected to the community.
This is good, here, let's try and get a couple more items on the board, and we'll.
I, I feel that, that we're getting into discussion right now, the purpose was just to get some visioning in, and we can have a discussion about. I think transportation, um, I'm thinking about transportation, um, better transportation to the outside world. Uh, you know, right now, we're, uh, you know, when Cascadia does happen, or Highway thirty, we're, we're, we're cut off. Um, so I think in terms of transportation, uh, even without Cascadia, that twenty, twenty-five years, even before we have a. Better access to a commuter, uh, system, so that we don't have, you know, the thousands, well, we'll always have hundreds, maybe thousands. Driving, have some kind of rail or bus.
Can't say work down.
Oh, Cascadia, yeah, so Cascadia, okay, sorry. Cascadia, that, sorry, I'm. Uh, the Cascadia, so, um, so that, uh, yeah, so better ease of transportation for our, our workforce. Um, even though we are trying to develop the waterfront and up, and, and the business park to have more. Local employment, I still think the reality is, the majority of folks are still gonna be going north or south to, uh, to work. So transportation, uh, options for, um, for our residents, uh, for ease of work, and, but also for, uh, emergency. Prep preparedness, and maybe that does mean a ferry of, of some sort. Um, and I've heard some people about the other day, let's bring a bridge in, I don't know. But I mean, at least something that has, improves access across the river, so that when the Lewis and Clark Bridge comes down, and Fremont Bridge comes down. And Highway thirty collapses both sides, we've got some kind of access to the outside.
Would you, and council, would you be all right if we put some sort of like regional linkage, I feel like.
Yeah, I guess that's what I'm saying, regional, yeah, so it'd be involved, and, and it'll also include, I, I. Railroad, how the railroad is located, and the switching, uh, yards, and those types of things, so that even. Transportation within our community, uh, is eased, um, so that we're not, uh, we don't have the size of the track kind of issues.
Millsboro had that, that conversation, uh, regarding their airport. And so, I didn't hear you mention that, surprises me, Patrick.
The airport, oh, we got scampus there.
We have scampus, don't we get in bed with scampus?
Well, there's the reg, okay, that's the regional, regional resilience here. There you go.
All right, Mr. Mayor, who else?
Five years is a storefront restoration program, hopefully by main street, that could be funded through our urban renewal.
Love it, love that one.
Yes.
Excellent choice.
Yes.
Okay, it's gonna be really small, though.
I'm so grateful for all of your perspective, like, I asked my neighbors, they wanna see like Applebee's. So this is really a great conversation, I'm really grateful for it. Any other items to go?
As, as a point of interest, I've had conversations with the president of the railroad. And in case of an earthquake, they do have passenger heavy equipment that can be moved, and they will probably, since it's a private operation. You know, the little trucks, they actually have cars and multi-passenger things that they can put on the road. I think we ought to have a very active communication with them.
Do it through, um, on the County Safety Committee, and they show up for it, they have a representative that shows.
They say they do have passenger moving equipment if we need it.
Right.
So are you contemplating that this little road would be not just for the emergency, but for the everyday? Lots of people here commute to Portland.
Look, I would, I would put, that's a separate issue, I would definitely want a, a rail for people every day, but right now, today. We have an earthquake, the railroad may be the only way out, and they have the, they have equipment. And you vote to repair their road and to move people today. That's what I'm saying, but yes, no, there should be a commuter line. I mean, in Salt Lake, they wanted a commuter line, and everybody said, no, 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 we will use it, they put in a commuter line, and they had to triple it in one year.
That's awesome, and I will also advocate for a meeting with the new emergency management director. County to talk through a lot of these issues, and like, and how we think about planning and visioning. But let us, uh, any final, no one's got a.
And the next, temporarily putting in parking by moving the rocks back. So that the restaurants can really utilize parking.
Yeah, temporary parking.
Yeah, just, you know, all we need is a forklift and move it back.
Yeah, I know.
We had a, we had a. We've been talking about that for a while, and our engineer was the biggest respect, um, so.
Brought that up for two or three years.
What was the engineer's reasonable argument for his?
I think it was wanting, uh, uh, a hard service, uh, Doug, we brought that up a number of times, the rocks down here, trying to park people out there.
I'm not going that far, I'm just talking to the boulders, like in front of the dockside, in front of the taproom. Move them back so you can have two rows of parking and let everyone get established.
Come through the gate, or?
No, a forklift, it'll just move those rocks back, and they can park in front of these places.
It's a hot topic, though.
It's always, I mean, this is.
Especially with the dockside reopening, so.
It's a very hot topic, we're in this room, but, uh, yeah, and let's get moving, we've got some ground to cover, um. I would say that I, I always go back to mission, mission is boss. This is why we are all here, this is why we do the work, and I see so many of the themes reflected in this exercise we've done, right? It's about the highest possible quality of life, it's about the comfort of all. And we do the work, and safe and healthy environment is such an important part of the working with planning commission. But it's really reading this and thinking about the roles and responsibilities of both of you bodies, it really. It resonates, it means a lot to me, we're being. So what's provided definition of land use planning? Do you do this, planning commission? All right, this is, this is your work, right? Um, and again, you can really hear the mission in, in these, right, where the community needs. Coming up with like values, consensus, and community visioning. And it's about that best possible long-term outcome. Which in such, this is like a staggering idea to me, best possible long-term outcome. So like, in twenty-five years, we're a lot different, thanks to the work we did today. Too far, too far, so, roles and responsibilities, I pulled those, I stole it. With citation from the Oregon Planning Commission handbook, and goods I really enjoy, right? This is roles and responsibilities of staff, council, and planning commission. And I would like to invite each of you, in your respective roles, to think about your favorite parts of your job, what's your favorite part of your service? And I'm inviting our response.
That's a good question to pump into somebody.
Well, you've got a list, you've got a bit of a menu to choose from.
The people.
Right, so representing constituents, would that be your, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Hire and fire city administrators, I just had to say it.
There we go.
It's on there.
No, on the slide, it's, it's the hiring.
So on here it says fire.
We weren't getting together.
One of the problems with the city council and and the planning staff is because of some of the strange rules, we can't have the city council and the planning staff sit down and discuss because we're all of a sudden in state planning rules or whatever. Basically, an unofficial council meeting. Some of the plans that John thinks is great are terrible. But John basically gets a hundred percent of the job done and says, here, council, this is what we want. Typically, in a planning situation, you're going back and forth. You may get nine tenths there and realize it's something that can't be done because of something that just came up and you have to dump it. We don't have that ease of mechanism for what what I call official planning.
Well, I would like to state that John works his butt off and some of our staff back here, they sit in on this room on Tuesdays and they pass out a lot of different ideas. It's not just something that a few are.
Well, and this is also, you know, the the power of strategic planning, right? We're coming into another strategic planning cycle, how do we get everyone engaged in that, right? Council, you are ultimately setting the direction, the policy direction. There's a whole lot of input that comes from so many different avenues to feed that.
I didn't say John did a bad job. I'm saying the planning mechanism is what's at fault. Sometimes, I mean, you go through a beautiful project and then you gotta dump the whole thing. And I've been in involved in a number of those in my career. And just because something else happened that we didn't know about and wasn't present when we started. But by our mechanism of not having the council and the staff be able to get together and just go through some of these things in an informal way hurts us.
David, are you, you're not talking about the planning commission and the city council, you're talking about the staff?
Staff, yeah, and even.
Planning and and city council.
And even the council in an informal way. Now, when you have a media formal rules or so on.
Yeah.
But some people here, oh, I remember my grandfather was there, that creek did this and this, and you better not do that. Well, so much for putting the hotel over there, just because that piece of information came up. We have no real way of covering all the bases unofficially before we start a planning cycle.
I haven't heard anyone doing that, so that that's none.
And it's part of.
We'd be like, father, you'd be on an island in Norway.
Yeah, but I I come out of New England, we've been doing this for three hundred some years. And and we've had a lot of problems which we've done and going forward. But we've had the ability to make mistakes because we don't have lots of the rules that say you gotta do it this way, that's what I'm saying.
Oregon public meetings lost.
Yes.
Not always upon time, yes.
That's the making right there.
I thought you wanted a planning book, I was gonna loan you mine.
Yeah, no, 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 I got planning.
I'll just bring it by.
I haven't got planning.
Stop it over at your house.
Commission, do you have a favorite part of your role?
Me?
Yeah.
What do I like when we really are working on something that we it we can make it fit into help to make it fit into the ordinances.
Yeah. That's great. I'll probably throw to staff too. Staff, do you have any favorite bits of your role?
So.
Sure.
Staff? There are definitely parts of my day I enjoy more than others. Long-range planning is my bread and butter. I love long-range planning. Yeah, that's my favorite part.
No, like the enforcement part?
Enforcement is inherently the work.
Jacob, you are the person.
I think in my time, the relationships you build with people, citizens, builders, politicians, is how that matter, it's so significant, it matters a lot, and those connections in helping people. Sometimes you're, you know, going down the book, but um I would say the relationship, the relationships.
Last one, continuity too.
Yeah.
My favorite things uh would be in the planning commission, um, we're not allowed to do and are here recommend policies and visioning, long-range planning.
Nice.
Being involved in that at all.
You want to do more of that?
Yeah, that's one reason I joined because the heading, planning.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I'm I'm a developer myself and uh that's what I enjoy doing and uh deal with a lot of real estate and if that was where I started. And I always came up to the commission and said, what about it, what about it? We don't hear Jacob appears and decisions are made and I go back to us earlier when I said.
I guess I was surprised that we didn't, as planning commissioners, didn't have any kind of work sessions like council does where we might create new po- policy or help do that within, let's say historic preservation or something.
Be great. I don't think we have to meet together if that is is a issue with legally or something like that. But maybe you could give us a description of what you're looking at uh as a council.
It's not a legal issue, but if we were to actually say that decisions are gonna be, we're gonna be making some big decisions and talking about planning. We can do that if we if we reference the meeting that we will and have public input.
Okay.
But.
So I think I think the demarcation point between and the kind kind, planning commission has a dual role. They they have this current current planning that they're dealing with quasi judicial decision-making. Then they have this other role where there's more long-term visionary, if there's not an active component, it's gonna get appealed. But those planning commission decisions that are made in that quasi judicial role, the field body is the city council. So that relation, I think a lot of what Council Topaz is talking about is that thread of the side of the relationship. And that, yeah. I heard as well. Uh, and I was gonna, you know, I didn't get a chance to say my favorite things. You know, having roots in building, building, planning, development and, you know, community development, real passion of mine and, you know, leave having that the humbling opportunity to lead the acquisition of the properties and the redevelopment system really meaningful experience and this is looking forward to the great things it can do for this community long-term and we're visionary, long-term vision. So it's, it takes all of us to.
You don't have a chance to meet with John, do, up there? Take a walk? Yeah. He knows it very well.
I wanted to ask Russ a question about that, just to clarify, because every time we make text amendments to our code, you are recommending policy changes and, you know, having a direct impact on policy by doing that. And I just wonder, is there a specific, I just wanted to get at that question, I feel like that is a role and that you.
Yeah, Riverfront Connector, that was long-range planning. I I think there are a lot of examples.
Yeah, and and workshops within those transportation plans, you know, you're just talking about the long-range plans through those processes. Um, and maybe they were dated at this point, you may not have been on the commission during that time.
Some of those I felt that were sort of cut and dried already.
Yes.
Um, you've already hired the engineers, you've already done, you know, a lot of.
Yeah.
Money's been spent to get to where we see it. And it's like the connector plan, you know, that won't even be around twenty-five years, I don't think that's gonna happen. Long range and and a very expensive and wiping out a lot of houses and stuff like that. And I mean, has issues on, but yeah. I think it's, it'd be it'd be interesting for me just to get in on the ground floor more than that. I don't wanna be, you know. I I think the the planning commission is a pretty good head about them from all aspects. And it's nicest of, you've got the the council, but also the planning commission is another group of people that can give some input. And uh, but after it's all engineered and the pretty pictures and everything, uh, there's, we're discussing about the width of bicycle lanes or something like that. And that's not what I'm.
I do think though, that as I was reading the planning commission, the municipal code. I I do say I hear Russ what you're saying. I think that according to this this code, I don't know if we're, I are, is part of the meeting gonna be looking at this specifically? Or is it just here for?
I was not gonna, it was a reminder and.
Okay, because.
Certainly dig into your code section.
Sure, because I think what Russ is asking and uh what Jennifer's asking is that, um, what I'm hearing is that, uh, I mean, by code, there are these opportunities recommended to city council. So to actually make re- I think make recommendations by taking initiative to be looking at this stuff and making recommendations that the city council can then take into account and work with staff to direct staff to go and certainly. So I do think our code already provides for that and part of what our conversation tonight would be, would be what does that look like? Satisfied needs or getting more information before concrete decisions or plans are being developed by staff. So that we can get the input from the planning commission prior to to that development. So then when it does come forward in form away, there's a little more, bit more um information.
Giving reasons for our decisions over to the city. City.
How often is a planning commission in need of legal counsel? Argue it all. I mean, we we're leaning on.
I I don't think that we are as much as Emerald Meadows would be an example, we didn't need it to recommend an R seven. But then someone showed up with their attorney. And you guys buckled to an R five, then we get it back.
See, and I don't like that word buckle, because I was confronted by you by that. And and I really convinced that, well, we are sitting in on these meetings. We are listening to the facts, not our personalities, not what. We have to listen to the law and the code. And we end up talking, we don't, no, we don't talk about this. But we had our attorney present and and there there was three actually, three attorneys at this last one. The three attorneys at the last one. Okay, Emerald Billers, there was, there was two. There were, no, we had our attorney present as well. Because we knew that it was highly contested. We show up with our attorneys and we come making sure that we are hearing what we're supposed to be hearing right.
Okay.
Grab Jacob, you sit in all of the meetings.
I watched that one, but I can't remember.
I just wanna say this, Emerald Billers, you told us that we buckled, we sold ourselves out. Go look at that neighborhood now. All of them have been built out.
Just minute, just minute, stop.
And then they come back, the developers of each lot with an R seven house
that would, our house plan, it fits on an R seven lot and run it by us and put it on an R five. In other words, they put the square footage for an R seven on an R five.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah, and so again, the the, so those what they asked for, that neighborhood.
I have already seen it.
Built out, it's a brand new neighborhood, it's it's two competing builders out there that competed against one another.
Right.
And that the neighborhood got built out and uh there's probably a lot of happy children and happy couples living in that community.
They came back to us and they had to reduce their side yards, which is throughout the whole city, you have regulations on side yards and everything.
Yeah.
And I think uh they came to us two times, they didn't even come to us on the last couple ones, I think they had get straight to Jacob, they didn't need us or whatever. Uh, but they they're reducing the yard sizes where the houses are closer together and that sort of thing. And that sort of took the R zone suggested.
That one were more than forty percent. I can guarantee you that of the lot coverage.
And this may actually be a.
Yeah, because then their dividends is worth their for thirty-seven to thirty-eight percent. And now we have switched our code to forty percent.
Yes.
You familiar with that, right?
Yeah.
And these houses you're talking about, R two code, R two code by by today's standards. Now, the R five was drawn up, it was legally, there was something that changed the state level. I, you can go and recall and watch that meeting, but it's been so long ago that uh what our attorney said is everything and everything that Jacob asked to be done was done. And and everything that was asked of the developer was asked to be done. So yes, it meant all the R five specifications because of a state law and Jacob's probably more familiar with.
And this is a really important point, and this is actually what we're getting to, is the advent of our housing need analysis and and kind of what, how plans have changed the actual work that you do and how statute and regulation changes a lot of it.
I know, it seems.
Done to you.
When it, when it, trust me, we take your guys' recommendation highly. If you do not give us a code that we can go off of, that's why Doug asked, if you need an attorney present, if you think it's gonna be one of those things that you need an attorney present, just because it doesn't feel right is not okay. You have to reference a code, improve decision on that.
I just had one question for clarification, just newer.
You were on, you were even on that one.
But I was told that cases where we might have been overturned, that you hear different testimony than we heard. Certain things, that's not the same testimony, is that true, that we hear different testimony?
That's what I stated.
Yeah.
Because I sit through them both and what happens a lot of times is a group will go before the planning commission and then get a decision that they disagree with. And so then they're like, okay, well, we have to rethink our strategy and sometimes they hire an attorney. And the the pitch, if you will, evolves. And so, yes, a lot of times the the pitch to the council is different than a commission just because of that natural evolution. And I, and 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 I feel that some of that consternation has to do with not being in tune with the pitch. Uh, the council wasn't necessarily tuned with the pitch. Planning commission had vice versa.
We refer to staff.
So.
So we heard what you've heard.
Sure, there's always, there's.
But a lot of coverage, Jacob, at the time, wasn't that? I mean, when Rick's talking about.
Thirty-seven, three.
Yeah, then, not then.
Well, that's what they're asking for a variance for. It was thirty-five, they were asking for thirty-seven to thirty-eight percent.
Right.
On places that you guys had already approved, but then got revoked. And then it got kicked back to us because it was a different builder asking for the variance, you guys denied it. And you'd already approved it for the other builder on the same lots. Exactly.
No, we didn't.
No, it was, it was absolutely true.
Always gonna be this tension between your bodies, that's what happens.
That's exactly how it would happen.
Decision and there's an opportunity to overturn our poll. There's always gonna be this dynamic tension. So how do you work together in the in the best service to the mission, right?
Part that's impossible, so I can convey this in this meeting, you know.
This is Jacob's right.
Boring side, but the the emotion or the soup of the room, that's what's really hard to because it's different, you know, the planning commission gets beef stew and the council gets chicken noodle soup. Um, depending on.
But I, that makes some kind of equal though. I like both.
Not at my house, they wouldn't be. Don't be, they're gonna have the stew.
So I.
I think I've eliminated on council for one of those heated um meetings that went before planning commission and then to the council. But to me, it seemed like the facts were the facts, in my opinion, in that case. So that's what I'm, not necessarily if I bought the soup, do you know what I mean?
Yeah, I I do, yeah. And I'm and I'm thinking of, Emerald Meadows is a good example of of the soup.
Okay.
I didn't wear hair for the soup party.
Okay.
Uh, so.
Jacob, uh, question on the codes and regulations, those is state mandated, they're not uh mandated by the city saying, no, it's correct.
Um, it, well, we're, when you talk about codes and regulations, there's a vast cadre of them. And some of them, yes, are the state saying you have to do it like this. Or um in some, in some cases, we have a little more control of our fate. Which is why we chose to, with the plan, with the the adopted every uh revision of our code. Uh, because if we did not adopt it by certain date, the state was going to impose those things. The duplex stuff.
Right, right.
So we, yeah, so it's the.
Yeah, well, the point I'm making is some of these overlying decisions are made mainly by the personal form. Not the case of St. Helens.
That is, yes.
When we get to, how big a house can you put on a lot?
Jacob.
Uh, we we start losing the flavor of St. Helens because we have to abide by state code. Or is there any way to uh contest that at the state level?
Um, I mean, it depends on the issue. Some of them would probably be more of a legislature attack, uh, for lack of a better term. Some of them would probably be more of a legislature attack, uh for lack of a better term. To try to change some of those things, uh but that's such a broad topic.
Because when I look at this plot here, this does not have the flavor of St. Helens, yet it matches the code.
Now, and actually, this this is a good, this is a good segue actually. Um looking at this property and another one, um if I may. So Emerald Meadows, you're all familiar with it, um it was one that got a lot of people excited. And this was in, this is a two thousand seventeen decision. One of the first things that the legal counsel or the owner inquired about once the planning commission um denied the zone change. Let me go down to zoning, whoops. I should have test drove this.
It's next time she gets a house, it's gonna be thirty five over here.
Okay.
Or on a red car.
You wanna go to the net?
Yeah. Yeah, so there's our current zoning map, we can see, uh well, no, 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 excuse me, this was the zoning map um back in two thousand sixteen. So you can see the shaded area, that's the property. Um one of the first things that uh the owner's attorney asked me for was if we had a housing needs analysis. And and we didn't at the time, and that's something that's, you know, the state saying you have to have this. Um at the time, they didn't. So um it just so happens that Community Action Team put out a housing study. And although it wasn't something that we adopted, it was, well, here are the numbers. And I think it was a case where if you're a public body, it's hard to argue with something that uh an entity like CAP created, even though it wasn't necessarily um an adopted document. Now, R five, it doesn't bar R five, and so, you know, there was some justification either way. At the time, it's one that could have gone either way. Um one could argue. So there's a before and after. Um the grass back when we were arguing over what color to put the zoning map. And then uh there's the finished product, at least viewed from uh North Fenonia Street. Another uh zoning decision where, you know, we had a a room full of people. And I think the planning commission one wasn't as full of the public as the council. But this was the ZAL annexation, sometimes in annexations, we have to determine zoning. In this case, both groups agreed, R seven, it's R seven on both sides. Um the reason I bring these up, and then, you know, there's a couple uh stub streets, so I just uh show pictures of those. The reason I bring both of these up, it's an example where the council planning commission didn't quite agree and an example where you did agree. This decision um was in two thousand eighteen. Now, if we think of timeline. As most of you recall, um in two thousand nineteen, we adopted our housing needs analysis. And this is not something we had for both the Emerald Meadows zone change, whereas the Barrick Lane annexation. So now we have something, the state said, okay, we need you to do this, you're a town that's big enough, we got the funding for it. And so now this is something in our comprehensive plan, so when we are making zoning decisions henceforth, we have to look at this housing needs analysis now. And I I kind of reflect on this because part part of what the planning commission does, you know, they listen to staff recommendation, they listen to the citizens and the applicant and all those people. And, you know, it got me thinking, well, let's say we had, let's say we adopted the two thousand or the housing needs analysis in two thousand sixteen. And we had this information um that shows, well, we have a great surplus of lower density land and a little bit of a deficit a deficit of high. So one could argue in making these decisions, and there's a lot of factors at play, but it could it could be something that points the needle towards higher density. And it just, let's say we had that adopted back in Emerald Meadows, and would that have been different with the planning commission? And then, you know, we can't go back in time. Um and then Barrick Lane as well, would we have been compelled to think of a higher density? The the point is, is that going forth, staff, we're gonna have the challenge, okay, we have this housing needs analysis, how do we recommend based on that? Um but now we have something in the books, we have something in our comprehensive plan, whereas we didn't before. Um and the little chart there circled, it shows that there's a slight deficit of of high density and a whole big surplus of low density.
Jacob, they did use our housing needs analysis study against us on against your decision to prove why they should build an R five subdivision. Because also uh our housing needs analysis, they were like thirty thousand dollars cheaper in R five lot versus an R seven. And it's just statistically where it falls, and we did not have a lot of R five for our community that thirty thousand could be, whether they get a loan or do not get a loan. Jennifer can appreciate that, she knows that. And it literally is meeting all the needs of all the community, that's why we are also part of our decision on that.
Wouldn't it to be affordable housing?
No, no, but that but that's what.
That was mentioned in it.
It was the, it was the sales pitch.
Yes.
And and we didn't have something adopted, but they took that data and went into a bunch of things.
And none of it was affordable housing.
No, it's uh what the going market, they consider affordable at the time, it's not affordable, it's.
Changed recently.
It's a different term, maybe using it for now. And Carl Carl Kaufman, he he gave us a presentation on the, you guys were for that. The trade card, yes. He came in and he was, you know, he was hoping to be a little over a hundred, he's like, guys, it's not, it's not looking good. And um one fifty to, we don't know yet, he goes, I'm struggling right now to try to make it.
He was on the news with what he.
Yeah, he just presented to us a a month ago, right?
Yeah.
Initially, it started out at seventy five.
Right.
Yeah.
And there are, I run into this in the policy row all the time, where people talk about affordable or housing affordability for, you know, for household two working. And big A, affordable housing. You know, that's the sixty to eighty percent of median income, and we're building these specifically to be affordable at this price point, right?
These have gone up with inflation, but these started being nonaffordable.
Yeah, yeah, well, it is, the big A, you gotta qualify, like, are you?
Yeah, they never were affordable.
Or are you trying to come in with some some word?
A key. Land, because you're leasing the land.
Right, yeah.
That's bizarre.
So the the city does make out in the the fifty year, then uh in a hundred years, it could be, they could either buy the property to homeowners association or maybe we can re with that, yeah, I know, I know.
St. Helens is a weird thing, talking about affordability, what in the end of the sixties, we had the highest per capita income of any town on our size. The mentality, I don't see a whole lot of fantastic houses, but our income here in town was super high compared to what it is now.
Well, we had Boise too.
Yeah, I know, uh. Code doesn't care where your industry is or is not, it just is, this is it, and we got caught with that.
Yeah.
Big time. Um and now anytime we can pick up a dollar, we need it, so we do it, which hurts the flavor of St. Helens.
Thank you.
The question is, what is affordable, they give us a number basically for the whole state.
Yeah.
Which, I mean, it's nice for the legislators, you don't have to do a whole lot of homework, but for us, it kills us. Is there any way to get to this, Jacob, or does it have to go through the legislature and have the state and zones or something?
Well, I I mean, affordability is a regional, perhaps national issue, and it's not just about the price of the lot, how many lots. There's a lot of dynamics, the the point of this is, as a city, we have this housing needs analysis that says, you know, we need to be able to accommodate so many units in a twenty year period. And whereas in the Emerald Meadow in Emerald Meadows zone change, the attorney took the Community Action Team study and kind of wove their magic. Um there's gonna be less weaving now because of this housing needs analysis. And so for zone change henceforth, just keep in mind, we'll be talking about this. And some of the recommendations from staff may differ from what they would have been prior to adoption of this.
And one thing I can tell you is people go one mile yard, they don't, they don't, they don't care less about yard, they wanna come sleep, they wanna be able to pick their trips and go. It's crazy to me, I know, we are, we are from St. Helens, we moved out here for a reason. The people that are moving here do not care about yards, they don't.
Because they can't find people to do the yard.
But that's who, that's who's coming here, you know, and they're good people, they're good, they're good people, they just, they work and they wanna just shack up, they wanna do their little electronic go.
But on the other side, they're also not spending their money here either.
Oh, I don't know that, I haven't, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I. Well, we were, we were in business, we can't believe how many people lived here for four to five years, because I would ask them, you know, if they came in the day. Oh, my group was in here. Well, how long have you lived at St. Helens? Four to five years was the general average. They'd never been across railroad tracks.
Yeah.
This could make the difference. This down here could make the difference.
City development, having more local jobs, our industrial property is huge, and to try to get more people who do not commute, spend more time, to spend, invest, et cetera, to the community.
That's where your focus really should be.
Yes.
The people, and then the community will grow.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, and speaking of new neighbors, I'm sorry for the quality of this slide, but uh just wanna point out, this is the.
You wanna read that?
I know, it's there.
I never read it.
Well, the key point, like, this is building highlights for the first half of twenty twenty one.
Is this on your pamphlet?
It should be in there.
Yeah.
It's terrible, I'll get, I'll get another slide. But the only point, the point I wanted to make here is that there's been in six months, valuation of over thirty three million dollars investment in residential. Thirty three million dollar investment in six months, and also over six hundred plan reviews by our team. That's building, that's public works, that's planning, just.
Huge.
Did I miss, did I misunderstand a word? No, anybody, do you talk about balls? I misunderstood.
No, no, these are investments, that's the residential.
So people are buying land here and building homes.
This is the building, this is permits that are coming out.
On what they're investing on the property, that's about it.
You said thirty three million, right?
Over.
Over thirty three million.
Yeah, in six months, an investment in residential structure.
As you guys have looked, we're talking about most of the subdivisions and approved school, middle schools and stuff like that.
I saw both the high school.
Think of that. Thirty three million dollars.
That's not much.
Chicken feed.
Thirty three million is nothing.
How many dollars per acre?
No, it's nothing.
More to come.
Christy, you're home now.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
There would only be ten houses.
So, yes, but but uh but a year ago, they weren't, what, it was, my house is what, three twenty five, and the price is at three seventy, was it three twenty five a year ago, it seems like.
Okay, the market will fall and you'll be back.
The bubble, the bubble.
And well, and speaking of new neighbors, the twenty twenty census data is coming out. Slowly, it's not super usable, and I'm, this was a one that I found, and it's not even one of the best source of data. So I just wanted to zoom out a little bit and look at the trends and what has happened since our last census, right? We've got some huge growth down here. So also, it's got boots, it's got its also some really big growth. And I don't have to tell you how much further experience I have. I pulled up here this West St. Helens tract, these census tracts, and I apologize that it is not just our city as a whole at this time. But we're growing, we're growing very, very quickly. West St. Helens, and this also includes, I don't know if this will ring true, or you can myth bust me, West St. Helens pausing units, the number of pausing units and the increase there. Is really interesting to me, and of course, we are getting more diverse. We are, our cities are looking different, our communities are certainly changing and growing. And will continue to. I thought it was interesting how this and this kind of McMillie and Warren also, this is pretty staggering growth, around six percent growth in ten years, like we and we can, we can feel this. And in six months, we have thirty nine dollar investment. Um our tract here, the one that we're sitting in, has had slower growth than the surrounding ones. And if you think back, I bet everyone in this room could could tell me more than I know what was happening ten years ago. Right? They were mills operating, there was industrial, yeah, and industrial opportunities down here, folks living close to that. And not, yeah.
On storm.
Let me just link it there, right? So this is the area, and it's really in our core here that we have experienced less growth than outlying areas in town.
One of the questions I have, we're talking about growth, is it because people wanna come here or they wanna get away from where they are? If we, if they wanna get away from where they are and we're kind of, we're random, so we catch them, that really doesn't speak very well for us. If they've got a good place there, but they wanna come to us, then it's becomes much more important that we're having growth.
And we're a mind reader of.
I know, but as I say.
Thousand people.
We've got, we've got to try.
I think it's important to note that we can't stop the growth, we can control how we grow.
No, no, that's, that's.
Right. So it's important to just remember that.
Right, and it's it's important to me to have neighbors that wanna be here.
Yes, yes.
Right, does that matter?
Why that they wanna be here?
Safe communities, good schools.
They're getting away from all the shootings in Portland.
Yes, that's why it's important to keep our city safe. Feeling.
But they they just wanna get out, they don't wanna participate in the city.
That's right.
And it's. From the city to shop.
I don't think it's a problem though.
With the bond.
I think it's a, it's a benefit. Well, and it's a fabulous place to raise everybody. And that they wanna be in a safe community, well, why is what going on?
But if they're gonna go out to eat, they go to Portland.
Yeah.
Not necessarily true.
If they're gonna buy clothes, they go to Portland.
Unless Wallington. Well, now they go online.
Ninety percent of people buy stuff on the internet, so.
With COVID shirt.
Can't stop that, though, that's just part of how.
Well, here's what, here's what we say too, and that's just part of capitalism, but when I say welcome to St. Helens, and I say, check out our stores, why not our stores, check them out? Instead of, ah, you guys, they don't, they don't, you know, they overhear me talking negatively about all these newcomers coming in. I was mayor, that's not okay, that's not okay that I'm even projecting that, because that's what I'm expecting. If I say welcome, no, I I I believe in laws of attraction, I'm a firm believer in this. I'm always very positive, very smiling, because I believe that all are welcome in our community and diversity is where it is how our community thrives. And we need it. And so I welcome everybody. And and let's make this thing, and we do, we are participating with our our police department, really moving a hundred percent. We're always talking with the school district, schools are vitally important. We are working with the county, you know, and you can laugh what you want, but this is really what we're doing, we are really doing a lot of work. We really are putting our feet to the ground, our nose to the grindstone, and we're working together on this, this is really happening in real time. It has been going on. It'll be us.
And it is, it is up to all of us to achieve the future and to work and serve us to to our city. And if not, I will hold a break, actually. Let's see about the newness.
I wanna, I wanna throw something in about the history of this town, let's go back to eighteen fifty. This is bump on the river that we could cut logs up on. So around a timber mill, a city group. And everything that's happened in this town has been great, just based on industry. And our industry, we don't have our guts.
I wanna work through the track more.
That's true.
And that's what we're.
That's where we were poor.
Yeah, I like that.
Last call for cookies. Any other refreshments, they will still be there, but we're gonna come back to more.
Any, any other refreshments? They will still be there, but we're gonna come back to order and keep going along.
Anyway.
Maybe we'll still be there, you know. Because we should've gotten some to go, so go for everything. But, uh, I did wanna pick back up with Jacob, kinda looking to the future.
Okay, so I know we've talked about housing, um, policy at nauseam. And both the intermission of council have said, no mercy, no more. But we got through the last batch and, um, yeah, the second phase to go through. So this is our cadre of housing types. And our dwelling, or excuse me, our development code generally allows the full cadre except cottage clusters. And that's an assemblage of multiple single-family dwellings on a single property. So that's something that we're, um, going to look at. Now, if you recall, with the, you have a question?
Yeah, about cottage clusters. We're gonna look at it, because the council's, I don't know how the planning commission feels, but we're kind of passionate about it. We're back from Long.
It's all about, it's all about the queue, man. It's all about that queue. And it's, it's very close to the top, and that's why I'm bringing it up tonight. Uh, so, there was, there was one question. And it's been, it's been brought up a little bit, um, early on, but now this is finally at the forefront, um, so we can talk about it. So there's, there's one question that I wanted to pose to, uh, these two groups while we have you together. In how we approach this next phase of housing. So I cannot call myself and be in two places, so I apologize to Sheila and Audrey for being behind you.
You shouldn't be behind your back right now.
But, yeah, I can go to the.
No, on the next slide or, uh, no.
Yeah.
All right. Here we go. This is, I want you. So this right now, and there's no, I mean, insurance.
I, I just have this up here in case we need to reference it. I don't wanna talk about it too much. But if we go to the next slide, um, we wanna talk about housing types. And, um, if you, and I know you're, you're not supposed to make a decision as a group. But basically, I'm looking for frowny faces. To determine how we proceed with this. So let me explain this diagram a little bit. And, um, when I do a presentation later on, um, hopefully this year or in the winter, this will be a. So, this represents some of the housing types, generally speaking, um, allowed in the city now. So we have the attached type unit, where you have a building, um, either two to five. And each, uh, unit is on its own property, but they're attached, so that's attached housing. Uh, we see that in Emerald Meadows, and they almost always come in pairs. We don't see many threes, fours, or fives. So that's been allowed, nothing changed. We can have. That was supposed to be a one. We can have a single dwelling, or now it can be a duplex, or two detached dwellings on a single property. That's something that we got through, and that was actually something the planning commission was a little resistant to at first. The council thought it was a way to go, and the council, the planning commission seemed to kind of go with it. There wasn't a lot of pushback, but there was some disagreement early on. Um, but now that this is what we've adopted, and there wasn't a whole lot of pushback, um, from the community when we put all that out. There's a question of, um. How do we look at multifamily? And basically, for us, that means three or more units on a piece of property. So currently, you can do this, you can have a building that has at least three units, and it can be multiple stories, and that's okay. And this is representative of some of our larger apartment complexes. The question are these two examples here. This one, you have four individual, um, single-family dwellings. That's your cottage cluster. I think we all agree that's somewhere we wanna go. In fact, that's in our housing needs analysis, uh, for something that we wanna seek. So that decision has been made. This has been posed a little bit, um, to the planning commission, probably more than the council. And we're finally at this point where, okay, we're gonna look at this, and it's, it's allowing a mix. And I think it makes sense based on this decision that was made. Currently, multifamily, sorry if I. Currently, multifamily, um, means three or more units on a lot. But it also restricts you to this kind of building type, an individual building with three units. As opposed to a mix of buildings, which may be three or more, or less. You could have a three-plex with a single dwelling or a duplex. So these are currently not allowed. Cottage cluster is clearly the case here. It seems like, based on this, we should allow this as well. So multifamily just means three or more units, which can be three individual units or some mix like that. So that's kind of where I'm engaging, um, the frowny face, if there's any frowny faces over that concept. I just wanna have an idea, um, because that'll help us, uh, pursue this further, um, I'm hoping this winter.
His bottom right hand is that, um, tiny houses. Tiny. An R seven lot.
Um. These are not zoning. I think we would just, uh, as multifamily three plus, we would apply it to anywhere where multifamily is allowed. Of course, that's a discussion we can have.
Right, that's another.
But the prime one, though, is, and, and, and these can be tiny houses or large. Tiny house doesn't necessarily have a definition.
Well, I know in Portland, they've got two or three places where they've got the tiny houses all on one lot.
Yeah.
And that is landscape, yes.
And that's your typical cottage cluster type of scenario.
Yeah.
So it's really, it's really about having options for people who wanna be creative. A lot of developers, they're just gonna wanna maximize density, and you're gonna see more of this. But it seems like, to me, allowing both this and this makes sense. And I know you're not supposed to make any decisions as a group, but if you think that's stupid as an individual, I'd like to know.
I personally, I've done a lot of reading about cottage clusters, because I love them. It's truly affordable housing. It's a great idea for seniors. The ones I read about, um, they actually have, uh, small clusters of housing, and then they may share like a common workshop or a common picnic area or different things, and that's truly affordable housing. So I think it's a fantastic idea.
Are you thinking like those in Portland, that where they've got a mall?
I, I know which ones you're talking about, but I've also seen them up in the Seattle area. There's a really successful one, and it's, um.
Some deck-built homes.
Yeah, stick-built homes, and, but they share common areas, so.
Yeah.
And that would imagine like, uh, for seniors, like a group of seniors.
Well, they've done, and young couples, yeah.
I think it's fantastic.
And that, that would be this example.
Are you using my side guard?
Uh, I, I like both, because I, I just think they both, here's me in, in thinking about it. We're not the ones, as long as they move loads and, and our infrastructure's all good.
Senior.
Why not be proactive and, and people are, that's what the demand calls for. It's amazing what the demand is calling for nowadays. Like I said, I, I, it's, we are currently working with a, um. Um, a company named, uh, which used to be Homer Dames, they did the Pearl District. And what they propose is very unique and different, and these people are used to doing, but they did the Pearl. It used to be Homer Dames, but now it's all that kind of things. And, uh, very unique, parking is a struggle. Um, that's, you know, but if it beats parking requirements, why not?
Yeah, and that's stuff we can, you know, get into later on. But really, the, the big question is allowing the cottage cluster hybrid, essentially, where you have, you know, a more conventional building that's, you know, could be three, twelve units, maybe more, with, uh, more family dwellings on that same property or duplexes. So it's, it's really allowing that kind of a mix.
I'd love to overhear what Russ has to say as a developer about it.
Yeah. I'm, I'm looking, getting out.
Just because there's one more unit on there, you know, doesn't make it affordable, but affordability is such a horrible term. Timber is the same, concrete lumber's the same, and, uh, what keeps going up in prices also is all the permit fees and everything. You know, when you call, projects that are affordable, they have, uh, funding, hell, but funding. So it's government funding that makes them affordable. That, and we've seen that all around town. Then you've got federal funding, well, yeah, they're affordable, because they got, you know, didn't cost that much to build, because they got free money. I think parking is an issue, especially in this town, when everybody's got two and a half cars, three cars. So. I don't think you're gonna attract that much. One thing I think if, if we did so, cottage clusters are great, I think the area might be like more downtown. I mean. Design, we get back into that, we're talking about design. And, uh, I think we need a little bit of design, especially in the old part of town. Some kind of. Handle on the design that's given to the, to, for a permit.
Yeah, and I, I disagree with that. If I have a piece of land, who are you to tell me what I can put on it, what I can't put on it?
Who are you to tell me how much you're gonna charge for a permit?
If I own the permit, yeah, but if I have a piece of, that's government, that's government. But, uh, as a, as a builder, you can't tell me my design, you can tell me all my, 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 uh, what space I can use up to forty percent of coverage.
Tell me what I could do on my building over here.
Huh?
I was restricted in what I could do, what I couldn't do on my.
It was zoned that way. It was zoned that way.
Because that's part of the historic district, so.
Okay, well, that, so the zone or historical district.
So I think that's gonna come into play with the whole redevelopment thing. I think it should. It should fit into this form of this.
So you're, so what I hear you that saying as a planning commission is that you'd like to do all of the downtown area?
No, that's not what he said.
No, no, I just think, well, I, what's coming down the line, like, I don't know if he's got permits or not, but, uh, Dan Hadfield came to us about four ho, six homes on Columbia Boulevard, across from the mortuary.
Yeah.
Locked there. And what he's done is he, he, he does cookie cutter houses. We know that, we've seen them all over.
Talk to him about our conversation with him? Okay, so we are aware of that as a city.
Yeah, and.
No, 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 so, so as, as, as mayor, I contacted Dan Hadfield, and I said, Dan, please allow us, as a city, to work with you. Please reconsider what you're thinking of doing there. Be a nice place for a store. We have urban renewal money that we might potentially be able to help you out with. You'll have to approach the council. He has said, well, I would love to put a commercial building there with apartments above. We'd like to have a store in the car wash with apartments above. He was, misunderstood Jacob when he asked that originally, and Jacob said, you can't do that. But he misunderstood Jacob, so I clarified it, right, Jacob? I clarified it. So that's what we can do through our urban renewals. We can incentivize those areas, and we can, we can reach out to those property owners or those building owners and say, this is blight. If you look at that, the old gas station on Fifteenth, right where the food banks being restored? You can see that building from the stoplight, and you see that piece of plywood in that window that's been there forever. Imagine if that had a facade on it, that we said, this is blight, because it's not the food bank, it's actually two separate. And we're to say, we as an urban renewal wanna help you out with this, and are you willing to accept it? We're willing to donate forty thousand dollars to it, because we want our city, that is a focal point to our city. It's areas like that that we can target, and you guys can be a huge part of that too, and recommending stuff like that. That's what the urban renewal, how it was explained to us through Laura and I. And we really need to have another recap on all this, as far as, as, as what we have in our toolbox.
My big problem with that was that, and I don't, I admit, I don't have a good handle on transportation or the quarter planner. All that happened before I came, but if somebody, anybody coming from Longview, they wanna come to our downtown core, they're gonna go down Sixth Street. And what they were gonna see was that, was the backyards.
Blight immediately.
No man's land between their backyard fence and the improved street, which would be terrible.
I reached out to Dan Hadfield and brought him down here, he said, with Durham Moss, myself, and Jacob.
Great, man.
That's good. Good job, mayor. I think that's great. That's where we need to go.
Yes.
Um, yeah, damn framed, uh, live-work buildings for me.
And I, I pretty much told him.
He knows, he knows how, you know, I showed him, I do that. That was twenty years ago.
I told him, like, oh, Dan, I, but no disrespect, but those are immediate blight.
Yeah, yeah, so, it's cookie cutter. He has his costs down, he knows exactly.
If somebody's watching this meeting and doesn't know what blight is, it means it looks like.
The value of relationships. We're able to talk with Dan and say, reconsider, and, and he's, you know, he's still thinking about it. Um, he just has a lot of projects before that one, so.
And I, I hope, and I would love for these bodies and the main street board to come together and talk about commercial and talk about different things we can do down here around preservation and facade improvements and that type of shit.
We're all passionate about this city, though. I, I agree with what you're saying on the Sixth Street. That was a no-brainer. That one, yes, I totally agree with that. I just was talking about a vacant lot, maybe on Third Street. You're gonna tell me I can't put something in, because there's a couple of historical houses on each side, you know? One was moved there on Fourth Street. It wasn't really there. The Knight Kingdom House was not really there. It's historical, but.
Which the city should acquire. It's the oldest house in St. Helens that ever goes on. I'll be on your doorstep. And he needs to acquire this house as a museum if it ever comes to be.
Jacob, you gotta have what you need here on the residential question.
Um, I am not seeing many frank questions over this. I know it's kind of an abstract matter. Right? I think I have enough for a recap.
One of the comments that comes out of some of the big cities, the bigger units have a tendency to have a higher crime rate. The cottage becomes more of a community, and the crime rate moves down. The only thing I've come from enough cities, where the cities can make the rules that says, it's your property, but you can't do what you just said you wanted to do. You can do a lot, but what you just wanted to do, that depends on the rules of the city. Just because you want it and it's yours. But the multiple smaller units have a less crime rate. The big units are a problem. In fact, Cabrizzi and some of the really big low-income housing in Chicago and also New York, where you had a hallway that basically was a blocked lawn with three elevators, and high crime rate until they blocked them off. So you had, a unit was one elevator. Then neighbors got to know each other, so be careful about size. That has a social implication.
Well, and I'm gonna go on and talk about some, some news, some, some higher-end residential. We've got a lot going on. Looking at the future, I'm gonna have Jenny to talk a little bit about the waterfront and also the Riverwalk project.
Yeah, um, so I know everyone should have seen a version of this at some point, so we're not gonna spend a long time here. But just to provide, kind of, I think one of the themes that Rachel wanted this presentation to have is that, um, planning is important. And I think we are at this point in the waterfront redevelopment, um, because of long-range planning. And, you know, it started with a framework plan, which some of you hoped to adopt. Baker, I think, the council, we adopted in twenty sixteen. Um, and that framework plan laid out these conceptual roadways that we're now further refining with design and engineering and moving forward. So, um, it's kind of one of the, on this project, it, it started with that long-range planning. Um, so where we're at with the street and utility extension onto the former mill. Um, we're still refining our thirty percent design. Um, so a typical for cap, uh, capital projects, we go thirty percent design, sixty percent design, and ninety percent can have check-ins. So we're still at kind of that early stage in design. And particularly, we're, um, focusing right now on the connection with. And particularly, we're focusing right now on the connection with Flumby Park and the Strand Street. So we've kind of added a little bit of scope in there to make sure that this street connection feels cohesive with the park. And so that's, that's kind of an update on that project. We're hoping to complete the design and engineering and bidding for what we're calling have phase one of the streets project um, in early twenty twenty-two. So that's the timeline. It'll, it'll take us to construction in twenty-two.
I have a question. Can you go back?
Yeah.
So what I'm looking here is, um, what I understood long ago, there was a promise that there would be a walking way along the edge of the river. I, I don't see where that fits on that particular job.
Actually, the next slide. So that's great. I'm glad you brought that up. That's a good segue.
There we go. That looks better.
So they're kind of, so there are two kind of parallel projects, all from look infrastructure. And this is the more exciting one and the more, um, I think interesting one. Uh, but this is the Riverwalk. We're kind of in a similar stage with this right now. We are working on thirty percent design. Um, and we know this is also in two phases. So is one starts in the park, kind of starts at the core of our downtown, um, extends slightly outside the park. And then we transition into what we call phase two, which we're just bringing to thirty percent design. Um, and so that's where we're at right now.
So once you say another park, the old park, because the new park is part of that space too.
So that green space that the mayor's referencing is just south of the park, um, where it's a special opportunity area. And that's gonna remain in public ownership, um, even with the redevelopment. Uh, it's not slated for redevelopment in the near future.
No, see, I think this is a project that ought to be reviewed totally at this point. I see no great financial generator for helping the city there. And I sure wouldn't want to find a apartment next to my sewer plant. And I want people there that are gonna generate a lot of money, not people who are gonna sleep there.
So can, can I just say that, you know, I keep hearing this and.
Yeah, it's time to review. That's why I'm saying.
I'm not, I'm not even arguing with you. I'm just trying to say, I've heard from a few people. The workforce is changing. People are working from home. They're sitting at home on their laptops. They're gonna be sitting at home on their laptop there and they're gonna go, I've been doing this all day and I'm gonna take lunchtime and I'm gonna go over here to, uh, from the pub and get me a burger. And then they're, or maybe they're gonna grind through the rest of the night and they're gonna say, hey, I wanna go over to the running dogs and have a brew of some food.
So what? I gotta.
That's where our workforce is going. The workforce is changing. They are working from home. More, more people and more people are working from home.
Good. They don't generate money at home. The company downtown is where you are.
Can I please have a minute?
You keep going, keep going, keep going. Go on.
Okay, well, this is something that we, as visionary, that we're up to twenty-five years out, is that people are working from home more. Maybe we're not becoming a branch of, maybe we're becoming more of a business community because people are working from home more. And the money is gonna stay here and they're not gonna, they're gonna spend their money here. I see that happening.
I know. I talk now, uh, working from home. I work from, I work for Microsoft. Microsoft's money is up in Seattle. I put my eight or twelve hours here on my computer. I don't make a lot of money for St. Helens. I can have a lot of people in front of their computers here and I'm gonna go feed somebody for running dog for his fifty dollar an hour job. No, that's not a lot of money.
Counselor, if I can point out, it is up to us to provide the public amenities and to put the structure in place.
Not, not if it's not for industry. This is for housing. This is dedicated for one thing only. That's what I'm, that's what I say we have to review.
Well, yes, I'm sure there's a plenty of material that we can provide you.
Which I disagree with, yes.
Okay, okay, opinion shared.
Okay, great.
Yes, let's move on.
Yes, and we are gonna move on.
I'm sorry that businesses are wanting to move out of here, so they, out here so they don't have to pay metro taxes and stuff.
Yes, yes.
The improvements along.
Absolutely is happening.
Those companies are coming in here because they don't wanna pay metro taxes.
As well.
A city zone.
No, city zone.
We're also hearing from the development community that views of the river are an opportunity, not just for industrials. Because we've got industrial properties to the south for, for, for employment lands. Um, this is a unique opportunity to create a destination and that's what we're trying to do with this project. Um, I did wanna say that one, once a developer is selected through a public bid process that council will have a hand in, the development of this site will come back to the planning commission through land division processes, through land use applications. Um, so this, this project, the redevelopment project will be, um, you'll be working jointly with the city council on its approval. And, um, the public will be very interested and at those meetings most likely. Um, so this, this is something that we should share a cohesive vision and, and, and talk about, um, as we move forward.
And it's, and it's based on the, the, the rezone that we did, that a lot of you were a part of and, and the framework plan, like Jenny mentioned earlier.
Right, yeah, we, we rezone the property from industrial to an extension of the Riverfront District, really. So that decision, Councilor Topaz, was, was made when we rezoned the property.
Well, it's wrong, but that's okay. I mean, I agree that you made it. And I'm trying to say, when we made the decision back then, things were rather different now. Right now, the US has been importing a lot of stuff from overseas. We're gonna have to rebuild our industry here. We would like to rebuild with this transportation. We've got good transportation, river and rail. That's just what's happened in the last ten years. This last two years is really bad. Should that really be just housing? Offices don't give you a lot of money. The main office, the corporate office is way far away. That's where the big money's being made.
I, I don't think that.
That's not our goal right now.
No, that's not our.
This isn't what we're here for.
I know, but as I say, what I'm trying to do is, let's think about what's happening now in the next twenty-five years. We, we made decisions in the last ten years. Maybe they're right, maybe they're wrong, but let's double check.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's enough of that now.
That's right.
There's a bowling ball game going on.
So the next slide, I think, uh, we are looking future and this is another large public, uh, project. Jacob.
Oh, yes. Yeah, so I think most of you know about the planning facility, which is the new police station and, and maybe, uh, second, uh, place for the, uh, for the operations center. And, uh, the main thing I wanted to point out is this is something that the council has been actively involved with considerably. Some of you have been involved with portions of it, but the planning commission will get this because it requires a land use permit that requires your approval. So, um, this is just an FYI of things, big, big public projects going on and this one, um, the planning commission will see.
But this was in a floodplain, so it's going further even though it's in a floodplain?
Yes.
Yes, yeah, that was a decision that, that, right. Yeah, I wasn't admitting, so I.
Well, that has a tension to the floodplain.
The Marine Board's gonna meet there too.
So I am looking at the building, which is quite a nice designed building, but I am trying to, put it on the land somewhere. Where are you putting this on the land?
Oh, Jacob, could you, could you clarify that?
Yeah, do you know where, do you know where Johnny's is at? Johnny's Tavern?
Is it?
Yeah.
Stray Zee.
Stoplight. Yeah, so there's, there's that old stoplight at the corner of Old Portland Road and Eighteenth.
Oh, there, yeah, there's a tavern.
Yeah, and that's the entrance to the mill.
Right.
So, so that's Johnny's Tavern. It's across Old Portland Road from Johnny's Tavern.
Excellent.
And only a corner, and only a corner of it was actually in the floodplain. Only, only a corner of it was in the floodplain.
A hundred, a hundred year.
A hundred year floodplain, yes.
Yeah. It was enough, it was enough to elevate and then.
It was the building. You gotta get to the building.
That has been thought of.
They still pose with that.
Well, the architect presented that at our last meeting, presented that and that was brought up discussion about all, uh, more than one access route. So I think, um, going back, so I think that, that's available. We can look at the plan. So it is going to have more than one ac- access point if, if such flooding occurs in that.
And you're gonna have to condemn land to get that property to.
No, 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 no. So, uh, yeah, you know where the apartment complex is? Coming down from like seventeen, maybe seventeen or sixteen? If you're gonna take that and go straight in, and go straight in, there's an actual road back there. We, we have the basement. Is our road, our right of way back there. That is our road. Yeah.
What do we do? Jenny, I'm gonna put others going back.
Just to open the door and then.
You're gonna provide that to developers or are you, you get a city block?
Overdue.
Several city, city blocks there.
If you do the slides, the city will own that property.
Are you asking about land and how the land.
Is there a, a division? Are you, is one developer gonna take all those blocks?
Because there's a lot of, like, a lot of things in that.
Block for block development.
Yeah, there's room.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think.
Because you're gonna need quite a bit.
At this point, we don't know. Our charter grant is a master developer.
Yeah.
Property, so that it feels like a cohesive development. Um, but it hasn't been decided yet.
We won the project, so we don't have time for more.
Yeah, I think ideally it would be a phase master developer.
Yeah, and I think that's about what we are.
Do you have a thought about that? Sorry.
We're about forty.
Sometimes.
About forty percent over of our public.
I don't wanna see another Pearl District.
Of what the needs are.
And how is the Pearl District?
That they're correct.
Yeah, I, I, I feel like that might be right.
I don't see any good character there.
Have they been provided with the Mackenzie design? Excuse me a second. If you guys, if you could just pause on the public safety. We will have more, we've got time. We have time and we're running early, so we can kind of dig a little bit deeper. And there are some, some renderings that we might be able to share. Sorry, your question was about the Riverfront personalization? Yeah, and you're getting into the character and the feel, which I think has come up multiple times tonight about just the architectural feel of those buildings. And, you know, you're not wanting it to be a pearl, is what I was hearing.
Well, and one developer, I think that there's, there's some virtue, uh, with a lot of different, uh, people coming in with their own ideas and different designs from different areas of the country and whatever. And seeing what they see rather than one developer like, well, I've done this by the river before. Go again.
That was kind of part of the process. Looking there is where for developers, uh, their input was solicited to look like. So I, I think in an old Devon decision, perhaps the best of all worlds would be a mass, you know, a master developer for a whole property. But we still haven't made that decision with all in, right? But we're still, yeah, so, but still.
You learn about the jail now?
No, we're, we're talking about the, uh, property here. The, the, the properties here that, uh, Patrick spoke on, basically what we're looking at is that, um, we would, nobody has any of those properties locked down. Nobody. And that we would encourage and do a review on anybody who would like to propose building a building on there, especially on return on investment, if it met the city's needs. If they have a really great idea, but we're not locked to anybody, anybody. We've had Coco, we've had Roy Kim, we've had Active State. We've had those type of people looking at this. It is in an opportunity zone as well. So it's a really good.
At one time, we had a study done with, uh, Portland State Urban Development, uh, uh, students that were, uh, in their master's program that took this town and did a, 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 a kind of a, a branding, uh, for lack of a better word, a branding kind of style of what was given thus far. In other words, the, the, the gable on the, uh, on the courthouse, on top of the courthouse, some key ingredients is like the windows that are above, uh, uh, what you work with. It's just some key ingredients of what's already here. It was a wonderful study, a wonderful presentation. And so we have that, uh, we have that on file somewhere.
I think I've got one, Russ, if you wanna see it.
Super familiar because he does the review for those. Yeah, yeah, as the member of the planning commission reviews those kinds of.
It's adopted and applicable to this very property.
I may still have it, Russ. If I do, you may look at it.
Yeah.
I'll hold it, but you can.
So, and we can come back. It sounds like we need a little bit more on the public safety facility and I don't know if we wanna do that with a little bit of time remaining. Um, I wanted to show you, this comes from the twenty twenty community survey. This was a community input survey. So we asked our citizens, what do you see as the biggest challenge in our city in the next ten years? And, and there it is. And this is the work of the whole city and commission and the council. It just, it's all, it's so front and center. And our community is really feeling this, right? We had about five percent of our citizens respond and we're getting ready for another iteration of this. And, and managing growth was, was on their mind. Um, it's one of our areas for improvement, really, is how we, and not the managing growth, maybe just the how we communicate about that. But you can see, right, there are a lot of the same themes that you brought up here, right? Public safety, police and development, the infrastructure, sound too, you know? But they really are, I mean, this is the greatest challenges as seen by our community. So stay tuned. There's another community input survey coming and I can't wait to see how it lines up or, or doesn't, right? All right, so I wanna hear from, from you. I wanna hear from you. What do you think of your neighbors when you say you're on the planning question or on city council? And if we can keep that kind of related to your, because they can say a lot of, I know my neighbors say a lot of things.
Thank you. That's what they say.
Good.
Sorry.
No, that's great. My neighbors don't say that. You wanna come and talk to them?
No, but talk to them.
I wanna know, the traffic situation is gonna be on Gable Road after they.
Build the apartments.
Little dogs.
Yeah. Yeah.
I said, don't worry.
I, I get a lot of inquiries about the waterfront, uh, almost daily, you know? And, uh, just tell them we're still moving forward with it because they don't, they don't, they're just like, they have no idea that's even being looked at. They have zero, so, uh, we are in the process of getting it engineered and to thirty percent completion, which means nothing to them. It just goes like right over, you know? Um, as long as you kind of move forward, it's still here.
I'm gonna say, no, some big guy over us is doing something.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's easier when there's heavy equipment, though. Other, other comments? What do you hear from your neighbors when you say you're on the.
Parks and Recreation, what, what is there to do? What do we do when we leave our, our, our front door and go outside? What is there to do in this town? What's going on? This, uh, I can speak very clearly on that usually, uh, being part of parks and trails. And, uh, uh, you can talk about developing the urban trail at this point. I just, it's those kinds of conversations I continually have.
You know, stay on it, um, the Crispy.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that is busy. No, I'm surprised.
No, I was talking about.
I don't see an advertised that when I walk my dog through there, I, I was absolutely flabbergasted. They're waiting like on a golf course for the next ones to move ahead.
They're polite too, aren't they?
Yeah, they come from all over.
My extreme, I have found them totally unfriendly at times, if you, anyway, so.
Well, if you get away.
That's what I hear from them about you, Pat.
Talking about the ones on the Crispy being unfriendly?
No, I'm kidding.
If you say hello, they'll say hello back and they've been fine.
I say, as I say hello to them too, I'll just sometimes walk and walk them.
It's all in how you say hello.
I, so, no, no, I just, I'm glad they're there.
In McCormick Park, they were still coming at seven o'clock, bringing their kids. Our night before last.
Uh, I've been hearing, uh, often the folks about the, uh, public safety fund and the, uh, and the fact that, um, council's looking at, um, the three dollar B on the utility, um, collected with the utility B, um, people are very supportive of our police department. I think they prefer, they wish that they didn't have to have a public safety fee. But when we explain to them why we're doing what we're doing because of, uh, the, the state's, uh, decision to take away seventy percent. the the state's uh, decision to take away seventy percent of our shared revenue through marijuana, et cetera, that we're, I think going from a two dollar to a three dollar fee. I think most people are supportive of it because, and when they understand that that uh, what a whole our police department is, um, yeah, people don't, I think, they don't, they don't necessarily like that, but they understand it and support it.
They like Doug's better with the two dollar and relooking at it in a couple of years.
Yeah.
I've heard that.
Right.
Other things? What else you hear from your neighbors?
I have one thing, I have a neighbor who's longest instructor, she runs between Seattle for Boeing and Texas. He talks about everybody who's doing the industry along the route. And the one thing he's made a comment, again, he runs trucks, is he hasn't heard about the traffic load on our streets? When you look at the waterfront, the industrial park and the apartments. And it's a forest to make believe you can get across the railroad and Route Thirty without a real change. But what he's heard is, here's this group talked about the connector, but they didn't talk about the businesses that were gonna be on the connector. Here's the industrial park, but they're not talking about how many trucks and how many people are coming and going there. Here's the waterfront, how many people are coming and going there? And, I mean, these are nice projects, but they connect to other things. He hasn't heard discussions about how this thing here connects with that thing over there. It's like, whoop, to heck with that, whoop. And unless we connect everything together, you know, we're stuck. Yes, beautiful, but you can't get to the waterfront, cause no streets going through. Uh, it's, that was one of.
It would eliminate the need for parking, though.
But this is it. I mean, and some of these things have to be connected with everything else. And one of the things just right now, be nicer than food parking, so people can come down and park and look at the water. There's one thing that is not a whole lot of parking in that waterfront or riverfront thing. There's no outsiders can really come and just look at the river there.
Other things? What else you hear?
I don't hear from my neighbors necessarily, because I don't live in St. Helens, I live in Columbia City, but I own commercial and residential real estate in St. Helens. And from being a real estate broker here, of course, I I hear mostly the positive. Everybody that comes in, they're excited about the riverfront redevelopment, but I think part of that's the obligation of the person telling the story. So if I'm excited about it, I love the city of St. Helens. And if I tell a good story, true, so I'm not saying, you know, bring me something, but tell the story of why people do come here and here, live here. Um, they're excited about it, so a little bit different, uh, you get it.
Great, thank you so much. I'm thinking about my negative neighbor now.
Well, I.
How many did you disturb?
I like the fact that people that do work from home, they, they're nice people, take a run and, cause I work for on their yard sometimes, okay? That's what I do for my business. And they talk about the city deer. The city deer, I mean, you can jass it, that is right there.
Absolutely.
You know, there's been, I I, you know.
Salvage permits now available.
Then you come down here, the the water, and you do get to see the water quite frequently, you can't if you wanna, especially if you just wanna walk a little ways. But then you see a big splash and a good, you know, sunrise and a big splash in the water or a sea lion coming up. I don't like them, but there's a lot of people think it's pretty cool. Let's import them out.
Well, I just want, I wanted to bring this up. I wanted to ask the question because public service is not for the faint of heart. This is, you you all, if you're very, very late at night, making very difficult decisions, people coming to yell at you.
I had been tapped on the back of a shoulder at an ATM and a mask lowered and told I was a piece of. In a safe way, and I thought, oh my gosh, here we go. And I let her know that too, you know, that, really, in here? I don't mind, but that's.
I've been stopped while I was walking my grandson along Dalton Lake. Decision that we made and uh, very aggressively questioned about decisions and.
And that was.
I was told to move on, I was yelled at, that's what I said.
That was the second.
So we're not alone, it's gonna happen.
I'm not alone. I just.
My son felt threatened enough that he stood and threw me on the person, and basically, you're not gonna talk to my mom that way.
So, thank you. Yeah, it happens.
But the reward is when people say thank you, when they say good job, when you know in your heart that you're you're really going forward for the good of the citizens. You're looking at it through all lenses.
Well, one thing that's interesting, you know, visitors say from Portland, and they come out here and say, you know, this town just feels good.
Yeah.
No particular thing, but they, it doesn't have the tension. And that happens over and over again. And when we really have a crush like at the Fourth of July, you don't see people being upset. Other places in this state, people are upset.
Well, I often tell the story of a couple of years ago, during Christmas, and the burn barrels were out there, we did the fireworks and Santa drives up in a fire engine. It's just like magical, you feel like you're in a Hallmark movie. Amazing, yes.
And they're gonna move somewhere because of the way it makes them feel, right?
I talk to people from Portland, I'd say the river's near. You know, it's on the river. They, you know, the highways are, and they're right through here, and it's, looks so typical from a small town, well, highway. You know, got your fast food and gas stations, which more to come, but uh, they just don't realize that this is here.
You know, Russ, I think about your neighborhood in particular and how close you guys are up there, and it's just beautiful and you guys are always so welcoming when people are walking through here, walking down the street, you know, the whole neighborhood is.
I'll change that.
Well, you know, I mean, that's what I think of St. Helens is right there, I guess, you know, it is.
How they let themselves in the back door.
Thank you so much, and thank you for sharing that, because it is, it's not, it's not, public service is not easy. It's uh, it's not hugely highly paid, it's not an easy work, you know? Especially being in a medical position, an appointed position, it's a, it's a difficult thing. And my other thing is I always encourage people to get involved. Like, I see you're very cranky, please be involved, please come down, let me give you more information, that's the thing. And that, it tends to help. They're so cranky, but at least they're well informed.
But cranky doesn't wanna volunteer. They wanna complain.
They just wanna win.
And so, you know, just tell them, well, that's your job, we need the others.
How do you want to be involved?
You wanna be the negative, okay.
Thank you, Rachel, well done.
Yeah, that's what I, that's what I have, and we do have time for session and knowing about, and there are more cookies and.
So do we wanna control Earth, this the location of, or you have other maps for our police facility?
Public records, right?
Yeah, well, what what do you want to see?
Well, I don't know, can you pull that up?
Magic board on the.
Yeah.
Mackenzie or, you have that or this.
There's the ground, Albersa.
When are we gonna have permit for deer money in this town? Never, never.
It's like a window.
Little yard, please.
It always has premises too.
I got them coming inside my Fenty tables and flowers.
Do you know they eat acorns? They eat acorns.
Yes.
You know, if I had to look it up, but they all, I remember we're out there eating acorns. And then driving on. Yeah.
The the worst thing is at eleven in the morning, on the evening, when people are leaving, going out of town, and the deer in the street, everybody has to stop and take pictures in the middle of the street. You know they're an outsider.
Is there any opportunity as back missionaries, if we have some kind of question or concern, we would like to pass on to the city council now? I I feel like now, seeing if anything, I would have to go testify in front of the city council, just as a citizen.
Walk your dog.
Oh.
Just your dog.
So what you can do? What you can do is you can either email us, not in a group, because I would make it, but email us or a letter or call.
He just stopped, so I'll shoot you now.
Anytime, anytime.
She could email the the council, as long as we don't respond, reply, all right. But you can, you can, you can send anything you want to the whole.
Yes, that's.
Well, for instance, one of the things I think that needs to be high on our agenda is that we need to rename the N Word Creek.
Oh, yes. It's been that since I was, that was the name of the yacht club, too, Yatch Club. Yeah.
Well, and that might be a geographic names thing.
It is a geographic name.
Not south.
There's, there's some legal documents to get involved in that, too.
Well, we should do it.
Well, you should do it.
Historically, it's on the map.
It is.
Yeah, they know.
That's one of those when we moved here.
Okay.
You can, you can, you can keep it the N word, it just.
Are we ready to zoom into the uh, zoom into the public safety facility here?
Yeah, so this is just for uh, context of where that public safety facility is at, so here's the hard lovely community of St. Helens. Um, and we zoom in here, here is McCormick Park, that classic kite shape for us that, um, are used to looking at maps. And then um, we go in a little bit, so this is the current um, St. Helens Recreation Center. It was the Farah Building for a long time when uh, Boise owned uh, the property. Here is the uh, former Boise Mill, now Cascade Tissue. This is Johnny's that we kinda talked about. Um, and so, Old Portland Road, this is the Eighteenth, and this is Castor. And this is right here is the proposed location of the public safety facility. We talked about the right of way that kind of uh, that exists, but isn't developed um, behind the apartments. And it is um, kinda goes through here. And um, there's just a, you know, there's, there's a grid.
Yeah.
I think some of these lesser roads fit that.
A little off, yeah.
Yeah, but so the 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 floodplain, there's a, there's a little bit a hundred year uh, on the property there, and then five hundred comes out a little bit further. Um, but then the 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 five hundred year floodplain, because of the creek and the bridge uh, back here, what the floodplain models show is there's kind of a, that's kind of a choke point, so the water wants to spill over. And so that creates this peninsula of floodplain, if you will, that comes out like that, so that the secondary access will be through um, this network over here. That's the.
Which gets it out of the floodplain.
Yes, yeah.
Jacob, we discussed the fact that that creek is an artificial location, historically not, well, not that far back. Uh, just digging deeper, but then I guess God and the government keep you from doing that.
The double G's. Yeah, so I, you know, you're digging into a fish bearing creek.
Yeah.
There's a lot of guys attached to it.
So uh, Mackenzie, when they did their proposal, uh, they they said we're gonna build that three feet?
Three feet above the hundred year floodplain.
So three feet above that corner, which
That's a good estimation.
So.
Big engineering job.
The building and the parking lot is in the floodplain?
No, no, the building and the parking will all be lifted.
All be above.
All be above.
So when you have a flood.
That's right.
Police department's gonna be in crisis because they have to use another.
That's why we need to make sure they have that secondary access. Ultimately, the uh, the personalization plan does show a second connection into the broader area uh, up here somewhere, but that's in a future phase. And so that'll be there eventually, um, but they'll be probably several years while the uh, public safety facility relies on this access point exclusively.
And out in front of the, in front of the apartments, there's three total.
That closet, yeah.
That's right, cause there was the the uh, officer only access, yeah. But that's, that's why floodplain law speaks of making sure you have an access that's outside the floodplain, because you don't want your first responders to be tied in a major event, you need them.
That's why we need a marine division, then they can just get in a boat.
A whole other matter.
What I said.
Alright.
So quick, can I encourage everyone to take food to go?